Alrighty, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to the easily and comfortably spot sabotage. My name is Rexi and I'm in San Antonio. And I have been using the Recovery International Four-Step Method for five years to help me to calm my nervous symptoms. I lead the Wednesday afternoon welcome meeting and also Saturday morning webinar on, they're both on Zoom. And I'm really excited to share this information with you all. Spotting sabotage is critical to your success with the R.I. method. So endorse yourself for registering for this session and for treating your mental health as your supreme goal. So let's start with a quote from our founder, Dr. Abraham Low. "Nervous ailments require will training, self-discipline, and self-control." This quote is a great foundation for talking about sabotage. Sabotage is resisting what's best for our mental health. It means that we are not training our will, we're not practicing self-discipline, nor are we practicing self-control when we're sabotaging. Let's take a look at the definition of sabotage that we're familiar with from the R.I. meetings. Sabotage is when we ignore or choose not to practice what we have learned in R.I., when we are not doing what is best for our mental health. Now let's remind ourselves about what R.I. does for us and how it does it. Recovery International gives us tools to lead peaceful and productive lives. And you ask how it does this? By training us to identify and manage negative thoughts, beliefs, feelings, and behaviors that can lead to emotional distress and physical symptoms. We see here that R.I. is a training program. It's not a quick fix. It is not magic, it's not something that someone else does for us. We undergo self-help training so that we can be self-led instead of symptom-led. Then we will be able to manage the thoughts, feelings, beliefs, and behaviors that lead to the emotional distress and physical symptoms. This leads us to a more detailed definition of sabotage. Sabotage is anything we do or don't do that leads to more emotional distress and physical symptoms, more intense emotional distress and physical symptoms, or longer-lasting emotional distress and physical symptoms. Now, to be clear, we are the ones who do or don't do the things that lead to the emotional distress and physical symptoms. It's not the outer environment that caused the symptoms. What's causing our symptoms is how we manage our inner environment. And the great news is that we can learn to manage our inner environment more effectively. Let's take a moment to remind ourselves about the difference between the outer and the inner environment. The outer environment is everything outside of our skin. People, events, the past, the future. The inner environment is everything within our skin. The feelings and the sensations are the two things within our skin that we cannot control. However, we can control the thoughts and the impulses. Now, when we control the thoughts and the impulses, we influence the feelings and the sensations. And this is what reduces our emotional distress and physical symptoms. That's why R.I. has spots like these. People, places, and things don't work us up, we work ourselves up. And we can work it up or we can work it down. When we sabotage, whether willfully or unknowingly, we violate Dr. Low's number-one rule: Never trade your mental health for anything. He wants us to make our mental health our priority. When we sabotage, I'm sorry if y'all did the job working. When we sabotage, we undermine that goal to the extent that we sometimes make mental health impossible. It becomes a game instead of our most important order of business. By practicing the R.I. method, we can learn to plan, decide, and act in ways that support instead of sabotage our mental health. Let's take a look at where we are at on our roadmap. We can now define the word, the term sabotage. It's anything we do or don't do that leads to more symptoms, more intense symptoms, or longer-lasting symptoms. Now let's move on to our second topic. List the benefits of spotting sabotage. Learning to spot sabotage can accelerate our progress in R.I. Who doesn't want that? It can help us to achieve long-lasting command of temper and symptoms. It can make balanced mental health possible. And it can make your mental health a business and not a game. Spotting sabotage means becoming consciously aware of what we are doing or not doing that leads to symptoms. It means to recognize and name what gets in the way of our mental health. Dr. Low tells us that to get well, we need to learn to immediately start spotting each symptom as it arises and each sabotaged trend as it arises. That takes practice, which is why R.I. is a training program. Ignoring or failing to spot sabotage does not mean that it does not exist, nor will ignoring it or make it stop or go away. The only way to reduce symptoms is to spot sabotage, change your thoughts, and control your impulses. Every nervous symptom, no matter how mysterious and incomprehensible, can be controlled through spotting thoughts and commanding muscles. Let's take a look now at where we are on the roadmap. We can now define the term sabotage, and we know why it's important to spot sabotage. Our third topic: To quickly and easily spot sabotage in examples given by others and in our own events. The practice of the Four-Step Method of giving examples and being spotted by the panel is designed to help to reduce the symptoms of the example giver. It is also part of the panel's practice of the method. The method is not being practiced to its fullest if spotting sabotage is ignored. Number five in the Big Five is sabotage. And I'm gonna give you, for those of you who may not be familiar with the Big Five, the Big Five consists of angry temper, fearful temper, muscle control, and muscle movement, and sabotage. So sabotage is number five. And it's very important to be able to recognize all five of these, but we're focusing on sabotage today. So identifying sabotage for the example giver is coaching, it's not criticism. There are no examples without sabotage because examples describe symptoms and symptoms are caused by sabotage. We want to help the example giver to sabotage less so that they can reduce symptoms in the future. A bonus is that by helping the example giver, we strengthen our ability to identify sabotage in ourselves. Dr. Low says that if we are sabotaging, we are not doing what is best for our mental health. If the example giver is only told what a good job they did and sabotage is never considered, they may not realize how they sabotaged. Therefore, the example giver may still have symptoms and they may still be in temper, and they may wonder if the program is working for them at all. So, how are we taught? What are we taught? We are taught to use the spots or the tools. Those words are interchangeable, spots and tools, which come from Dr. Low's writings. So what are they teaching us? They're teaching us what to do. They're teaching us what not to do. Or they are giving us ideas on more objective thought. Okay, here are some examples of spots that tell us what to do. Now, these are just a few examples. I'm sure y'all can think of a lot more, and I'm gonna ask you that in a little while. But practice, practice, practice. It's telling us we've gotta practice. This is a method that must be practiced consistently. Try, fail, try, fail, try, succeed. It's telling us, don't ever give up. Endorse for the effort, not only for the outcome. It's telling us we have to find these things that we're doing right. And Dr. Low says that, well, he says if we're not endorsing, we're indicting. And we don't wanna do that to ourselves. We want to find things that we can give ourselves that mental pat on the back and say, "A job well done." Okay, the last one, take the total view, not the partial view. So, look at the whole big picture. Don't put those blinders on and just see a partial view of what's going on around you. Look at everything. So it's important to note that spots and tools that we use to whittle down those pesky symptoms. Symptoms are caused by sabotage. That's why each spot in R.I. addresses at least one sabotage. So here are some spots that tell us what not to do to avoid or address sabotage. Judgment of ourselves or others robs us of our inner peace. So, we need to stop the judgment, judging. Temperamental lingo is alarmist and defeatist by nature. So stop the temperamental lingo. And this next one is very, very clear. Don't blame, complain, or explain. And the last one, to talk it up is to work it up. And we do, we keep on talking about whatever the thing was that got us worked up in the first place. And all it does is make us more, get us more worked up. Okay, here are some spots that teach us how to think more objectively to avoid or address the sabotage. This is a triviality in comparison to my mental health. Outer approval is a want, inner approval is a need. Feelings and sensations are distressing but not dangerous. This is nerves and nothing else. Okay, now, we're gonna, this is some practice that I want y'all to take part in now. I want you all to tell me, we're gonna take each one of these, one at a time. I want you to tell me, is this a spot that tells us what to do, what not to do? Or does it just give us more objectivity? And, um, many of the spots can do any of these things or all of these things. So, how would you look at it? Anticipate joyfully or not at all? Is that telling us what to do, what not to do? Or is it giving a more objective view?
Telling us what to do.
Say that again?
Telling us what to do.
Okay. And the second one, it's not how we feel, it's how we function.
To do in the chat?
I agree with that.
Very good. And how about the next one? Judgment of ourselves or others robs us of our inner peace.
What not to do.
What not to do is coming up in the chat as well.
Very good. All right, how about that last one? Sometimes people do things that annoy us not to annoy us.
Objectivity.
Objectivity, that's exactly what it is. Okay, let's go to the next one. A symbolic victory is an empty victory. What is that?
Objectivity.
Objectivity. Feelings should be expressed and temper suppressed.
Telling us what to do.
Uh huh, and actually, that's one of those double-barreled ones. It's telling us what to do, but then it's telling us what not to do.
And what not to do, right.
Okay. All right, the third one, stop dragging your past around with you.
Know your what to do.
Okay, very good. Replace an insecure thought with a secure thought.
Objectivity.
What to do.
Very good. Well, actually, actually, it can be objectivity, but it's also what to do. We're replacing the insecure thought. Okay, what about number five? Every act of self-control leads to a sense of self-respect.
Objectivity.
Objectivity, very good. Okay, let me move you guys back over here. Okay, now, another way to spot sabotage in the examples given by others or in your own events is to determine how the outer environment crossed over the bridge of temper into the inner environment. We can ask questions like these here. Was the example giver judging? Were they blaming? Were they worrying? Or maybe doing something else that is in this list here on the left-hand side? Or over on the right, were they seeing intent? Were they attaching danger? Were they, did they have imagination on fire? Or maybe one of these others here?
So Rexi, you're saying during the example period, as you're listening to that, these are some of the things that you could be thinking about that could be showing some sabotage in that example? Are they blaming? Are they comparing? Okay.
Right, exactly. And basically, you know, when we're going through, well, now, this is me. Maybe, maybe everybody doesn't do this. But when someone's giving you an example and I'm listening to what the example is saying, I'm listening, okay, this is a good spot, that's a good spot. So when we're, when we're thinking about the spots that we're going to give for this example, we can also see the, um, the sabotage there also. Because the spots, every spot, every spot is either going to tell you what to do, what not to do, or gonna give you some objectivity. So, when you're looking at those spots that you're going to give during the, these, time that we give the spots after the example, you also can see the sabotage at the same time. And let me, let me tell y'all, let me explain to y'all why this, uh, this is a good time to explain why these sabotage sessions started in the first place. When we all went online and I was going to a lot of meetings, and every time we would get to sabotage, very few people would be speaking up. But, but yet, when we were doing the spotting, everybody was spotting and giving great spots. But when it came to sabotage, everybody, you know, almost everybody clammed up. People, and then, one thing I found out that several people said was that they felt like pointing out sabotage was being critical. Well, it could be seen like that, but according to what Dr. Low is telling us, sabotage causes the symptoms. And if we have no idea what it was we did to sabotage, it's gonna be hard for us to, it's gonna be harder. It's not impossible, but it's gonna be harder for us to change because we don't know what to look for. We don't know what's causing the symptoms. We don't know what that sabotage is that's causing the symptoms. So that's why, when I started noticing this, and I started mentioning it to a couple of other people, and then at some point, I thought, you know, maybe this is a good thing to let people know about. And that's why I started these to begin with. And since we've started, so many people, it's, I think at all the meetings now that I go to, when they mention sabotage, the hands go up and people are responding, which I guess they just didn't understand it before. Or it was, you know, they felt like it was criticizing, but it's not. It's actually part of the process and part of the program.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
What's meant by temperamental lingo?
I'm sorry, say it again. Oh, temperamental lingo. Okay, there's certain words like, well, for one thing, some people say, "Every time I say this, you know, such and such happens," or, "My, I have this excruciating headache." It's like absolute words. It also can include curse language.
Always.
Always is another word.
Ever, yeah, he never does the dishes.
Right. So it's exaggeration. And Lisa, you wanna add something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, cussing, you know, using words that can work us up again to prove that we're right. You know, another good thing about temperamental lingo, he's always gonna do this, you know, to prove that we're right and they're wrong. Or we're right and they're wrong.
Very good.
So the worst ever?
The worst ever, perfect. No, I'm not laughing at you, but yes.
I think he's at risk.
We can relate to it.
Yeah, I'd like to say, uh, one of those temperamental lingos is, "It's killing me."
Yes, yes. So we're exaggerating our symptoms and using words that only inflame us more and work up our, work us up more.
Anything that is extreme?
Yes, yes.
Just excessive negativity?
Mm-hmm, very good.
Okay, thank you.
May I make a comment?
What is, what is that?
I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, yes, go ahead, please.
Getting back to sabotaging, as a leader, I find the biggest problem in example is step one. Failure to spot exactly what caused you to work yourself up many times.
Right, we're gonna talk about that in a minute, too.
Yeah. And the other thing was that Dr. Low says you have to spot your temper first. Almost, spotting the temper.
That's right. And that's, that's in one of the steps as well. Of course, when someone's giving you an example, they might have several sabotages. They might not just be one, there might be several. Now remember, spots are tools that we use to whittle down our symptoms. And symptoms are caused by sabotage. That's why each spot addresses at least one type of sabotage. But in some instances, it might be more than one. Okay. Okay, so now here are some more clues to look for when we're spotting sabotage for ourselves or others. Someone mentioned, well, we're not there yet, but failing, failing to use the Four-Step Method. So they might make up some, some, some form of their own method and call it the Four-Step Method. But we're talking about the, the specific Four-Step Method. So that if we don't use that, that's sabotage. Okay, now, this one here, actually talking about an ongoing situation, multiple events, or a vicious cycle, instead of focusing on one single event. And I think Dan is the one that mentioned this in step one. If we're telling this big, long story, we're giving multiple events, maybe it's an ongoing situation or a vicious cycle. These are all forms of sabotage. And giving too much information, again, in step one. And there's two reasons why we don't want, at least two that I know of, there might be more. But there's at least two reasons why we should not give too much in step one. We don't wanna work ourselves up, which we tend to do if we give too much information. We're also justifying our temper, or we risk justifying our temper. And then interpreting, analyzing, trying to convince or dramatizing, those are all sabotage. And then the really, really, well, I say really big one. They're all, they're all big ones, they're all important. We wanna, we wanna eliminate all of them, but not endorsing. It's very, very important to find something that you can endorse yourself for. And Dr. Low says we are a capable lot. We all can find things to endorse for. Okay, so when we or others do step three, this, excuse me, it is sabotage if we are not able to identify specific types of anger, angry and fearful temper. Now, I think somebody already brought this up. So let's, let's take a closer look. Now, and, and let me remind you, or let me say this. Identifying the specific types of angry and fearful temper is not the same thing as identifying the angry and fearful thoughts in step two of the R.I. method. So in step two, it asks for the angry thought that you had at the outer environment, and then it asks for the fearful thought that you had towards yourself. Now, in this step, it's asking you to identify the angry and fearful temper. Now, in identifying the angry and fearful temper, you, you need to be able to express or tell us who, or tell yourself at least, when you're, when you're doing it on yourself, you have to be able to spot who it is that you have this angry temper towards, or maybe it's the situation. And then you have to be able to recognize in what nuance or what flavor, and that's what these are, resentment, impatience, indignation, disgust, hatred, or maybe something totally different. These are how you have the angry temper. And many, many people have told me that this, they were not doing this. And even in, I think it's, I read about it just a couple of weeks ago in, I can't remember now which book it was, but one of the Recovery International books, Treasure Rice. When she first started, opened, opened up her meeting, her first meeting in a distant town away from where Dr. Low was, she was not real successful at first. And so one day, it was she, it was she and one other person who showed up at the meeting and they were talking. And when it came to the angry temper and fearful temper, she told the other person that was with her, "Oh, we don't have any temper, so we can just skip that." Well, no, you can't skip that. You have to be able to recognize. And she says later on, once she realized, Dr. Low brought it to her attention, and once she realized and had a better understanding of the angry temper and the fearful temper, then she started having results and she started helping more people with the, the method. So that is very important to be able to do that. And then down here at the bottom, comparison temper. Now, a lot of times, we don't talk about comparison temper, but this is when, this is judging yourself as being better or worse than another person. And to tell you the truth, a lot of times, there is a lot of judgment in many examples that I hear because if you're angry at somebody and if you're saying to yourself, "I could do a better job than that," well, you're comparing yourself to being better or worse than another person. So comparison temper is, is another, but like I said, we don't talk a lot about that. But it is one that Dr. Low has talked about in his writings. Okay. Any questions about that?
I, I have a quick question. Is there a difference? I mean, I know there kind of is, but can you just describe the difference between, let's say, angry temper and angry thoughts?
Okay, an angry thought is like, you get angry, you have the symptoms, and you're, you're saying to yourself, or maybe saying out loud, "You are an idiot." Well, actually, that, that's gonna be several, several sabotages using the word idiot because you're using temperamental lingo. But just if you say, "You're wrong." Just to say, "You're wrong." Two, two are about another person, that's an angry thought. Okay? But if angry temper... Okay, but if angry temper is. The way that you're having this, this temper. It it's, you wanna know who it's to, exactly who it's towards or what it's towards. And you want to know how you're having it. Are you having resentment, impatience, indignation, disgust, hatred? So see, the the nuance of how you have the temper is not necessarily the thought. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, and and then the same thing with the the fearful temper, you you need to know that also. Did somebody have their hand up? Hey, uh, Dan, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, uh, just a spotting with comparison temper. Uh, removing it to the temp- uh, comparisons of odious.
Mm hmm, very good, very good. Okay, so knowing how the environment crossed over the bridge is. Such as through impatience, disgust, despair, or shame helps us to choose the right spots and become. Aware of our habit, of our habit, of our habit patterns. Um, awareness helps us to sabotage less in the future. Uh, Fedora, you have a question?
Yes, hi, um. My, my question, sometimes I have difficulty. Um, spotting my angry temper. Let's say that the example is I'm carrying a box. And I dropped the box and its content. So um, since it's negative judgment towards myself, it's easy to to spot the fearful temper. But in in an example like that, I always say, okay, maybe the panel can help me spot the angry temper. And usually they will say angry at the situation, but what else would would that be?
If no one, if if another person is not, hold on just a second. Okay, I I was having a little trouble hearing some of y'all. Um, okay, if if no other person is involved. You, you can't necessarily um, say you're, you're angry at the other person, but the situation. Now, however, um, you could. You could be angry, like if someone saw what happened. And you could be angry at the people who saw it. And you could be embarrassed by it, and you could still have angry at that other person or or at the people who saw you. Um, also, um. We can also have angry temper towards people who died, even if it's people we loved. Our loved ones, we can have angry temper towards babies, and we can have anger temper towards, um. Uh, towards pets. So, um, even though we can have angry temper towards these people or these animals. That doesn't mean that we don't love them, but but we can have angry temper towards them. And we can have angry temper. If we, if we just think somebody did something, that can be angry temper. But it it is sabotage, but it's angry, it can be angry temper. Uh, Dan?
Yeah, going along with that, love if you must, hate if you must, they'll make an issue out of it.
Mm hmm, very good, very good. Okay, Fedora, did that help you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, um. So remember, awareness of sabotage helps us to sabotage less in the future. Okay, now we're going to do some more practice, and we can talk more also about the the example, the steps. Okay, now this was an example that someone offered to me to use for the meeting tonight. Um. And I'm going to, I'm I'm gonna read it, and then I want you all to tell me what sabotage you see in in step one. So remember, step one is supposed to be a single situation. It's supposed to be brief. And it's supposed to be specific, but this was the answer to step one. I was on the phone with a friend. I hate talking to her on the phone because she always talks my ear off. She complains, and when I offer her advice, she never follows my advice. She just complains and gossips. Always, she complains and gossips. I can't stand her, I can hardly get a word in edgewise. I was working up, I, excuse me, I was worked up when the phone rang. Then, when I saw it was her, again, I heard her voice. I was, I I could tell that she was in a bad mood as soon as I heard her voice. She sounded very cranky as she usually does. Okay, what sabotage sabotages do y'all hear here in this step?
Temperamental lingo, would that be?
Mm hmm, yeah, yeah, that's one. What else? Uh, Dan?
Well, as we read before, interpreting, analyzing, trying to convince, or dramatizing situation.
Mm hmm, very good.
She's telling, she's telling the story.
Yes, she is, she sure is. Okay, now, and when I pull this out, I don't know if I, okay, it's way too much information. She's being judgmental, and she's really in a vicious cycle. Also, this is an ongoing event. This is not one event, there's three or four times, and three or four events she could have. Like, as soon as she knew, um, when the phone rang and she looked at the caller ID and she started getting worked up. She should have started spotting right then and there. And then if she had spotted for that event, and then later on she could spot for the other. So otherwise, when you have multiple events, do an example for each event. And uh, I always encourage people to write down the examples, especially if you're new. Because it'll, it can help you to uh, learn the steps and to learn the spottings. And what I do when I write, and I've been in, like I said, five years, I've been working the pro- the method. But I still write down my examples. I may not write down every one of them, but I try to, uh, because it does help me a lot. Okay, Dan, did you see something else?
Yeah, well, obviously, step one is is too broad. It should be one specific thing, but the other parts of that can be brought out in step two. Because those are disturbing thoughts that are created by the phone call. So a lot of my, a lot of my attendees make that mistake, you know, they're they're, and I also encourage them, you know. Four steps, in the wee hours of the morning, you can't reach somebody. Pretend you're at a meeting and put it in four steps, that's great training.
Mm hmm, very good, very good. You can write them up in the middle of the night, you could go on the Facebook page and uh, type it up there. Very good. Okay, um, now let's go on to step two. I guess somebody, somebody else can say something?
Uh, could she have the option not answering the phone?
Yes, that is an option, yes, that is an option. That is removing yourself from a disturbing, uh, from a uh, symptom provoking or symptom. I forget now exactly how it goes, but it's it's, she knows it's something that's going to uh, cause her symptoms. So it's, she can remove herself from that situation. And then once she. Okay, once she removes herself from the situation, she can go off and write up that example and get over it right then. And see, that's another thing, if you don't take one event at a time, these things start building up and building up and building up. And it it, the more it builds up, the more symptoms, the more uh, emotional distress you're in, the more symptoms you're in. So it's very important to take it one event at a time. Uh, Lisa?
Yeah, and also as a leader, what what I I may do is when somebody starts rambling, I. Many people that have been on my meetings may hear me say, whoa, 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 hang on a second. Let's start with one event, and when we get to step two. We'll go on to this, because what happens is, we come to recovery meetings. In symptoms, and the most important thing is that we want people to leave with less symptoms. Um, so, so, um, and I was gonna say, um. There's something in here, too, that she, she has a lot of judgment when she says she never take, follows my advice, like. We're not her authority at all, so we want to drop that judgment as well.
Very good, and and I do the same thing, Lisa, when someone starts going on in the.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Yep, yep. Okay, so step two, report the symptoms you experienced, both physical and mental. For instance, the angry and fearful thoughts, now see, this is where the angry fearful thoughts come in. The confusion, palpitation, disturbing impulses, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so, uh, step two, this is what she wrote. I wanted to tell her to shut up and listen to me, I know what's best for her. I was having air hunger, sweaty palms, and tenseness all over. All she wants to do is gossip and complain and criticize. I told her I was not interested, and she cussed me, and I cussed her, and then hung up on her. I told my husband about the conversation, and he told me I should not have answered the phone. I told him that I have a right to answer my own phone. She is an idiot, and so is my husband, I have rights. Okay, so what is, what sabotage y'all see there? Anybody?
Once again, a lot of um, judge.
Uh huh, very good, Rithka?
Yes, I just want to mention that Dr. Lo, I think, correct me if I'm incorrect. Um. Teaches us that we can express ourselves in in a cultured way without raw nature. Uh, we can express. Uh, our, um. We can express ourselves, but repress our temper.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
See in the chat, I'm seeing talking it up and judgment.
And, uh, Dan?
Well, I see a romantic intellectual's performance here. You know, romanticizing about the way life should be and intellectualizing that this is the way I'm gonna tell you how to do it.
That's right, that's right. And also, I see some exceptionality in there, too. I know what's right for her. And I have rights.
Okay.
Couple other things in the chat, lack of culture, and she did not control her impulse to cuss.
Mm hmm, very good. Okay, and so this.
Perhaps an overextend, perhaps an over sense of responsibility also.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one. Okay, so, and let's see, did we mention all of these going, oh, going for symbolic victory, I saw that in there also. Um, and continuing to focus and criticize the neighbor, and and it's just a vicious cycle. Okay, let's go, a- a- and and so now, see you guys, this is where the angry and the fearful thoughts come in, okay? But that's just what you're thinking, it's not necessarily telling exactly who it was towards. Or in what nuance, that comes in step three. Report your spotting of angry and fearful temper. The R I tools used to help yourself and your self endorsement for the effort. And she wrote, I can't, excuse me, I can't change the outer environment. Every act of self-control leaves a sense of self-respect and ultimately self-confidence. People do things that annoy us, not not to annoy us. Calm begets calm and temper begets temper, so what sabotage do we see here? Trina?
What I do want to say before, as I just lost track a little bit, that her pre- your predisposition governs your disposition.
Mm hmm, very good.
When you predispose the temper, Dr. Lo says, you have to do what they call a predispositional shift. Because if you can't change a situation, you gotta change your attitude.
Very good.
Also, it's not the incident itself, it's the attitude you bring to the incident.
Mm hmm, that's right. Anybody else?
In the chat, um, there's not spotting angry temper. And I'm gonna add, I don't see any self endorsement here.
Right, and not only is there not angry temper, but that she didn't address her fearful temper either. And like Angela said, no, no endorsement. Uh, Dan, you have something else?
Yeah, something that comes up a lot of times when I'm reading is if people fail to spot, you have to give people their average. Especially people you know on a daily basis or a friend, you can't change the outer environment, so you have to give them their average.
Very good. Anybody else? I'm sorry, Susan?
Are we talking about sabotage now?
Yeah, we're picking out the sabotage in this step here.
Well, I I I know this might not be correct, but I think answering the phone was very much sabotage.
Yes, it's, if she, if she knew what, how the call was gonna go, and she didn't wanna go there. She should have just let it ring or said it, let it go to voicemail or whatever. And then, and then if she had symptoms at that point, that was when the time was to go off. And then work her her four steps on that, on those symptoms. Okay, okay, so let's see what uh, what I put in here. Did not, okay, did not spot angry and fearful temper and did not endorse, okay, very good, anybody else on this one?
Um, yes, regarding not picking it up, she said she was already in temper, and then the phone rang. So sabotage for not dealing with the temper before she answered the phone.
Exactly, right, so she could have been spotting before the even, the phone even rang. She could be spotting on her, right, very good, I, that's a very good point, I didn't even see that. Okay, Dan?
Yeah, going along with answering the phone, of course, it's a choice. If she wants to avoid a temper producing situation, but Dr. Lo says we have to know the distinction. Between aggressive aggressiveness, passiveness, and assertiveness. We strive to be assertive, in the beginning, we may have to be a doormat. But it's okay to express our feelings, but tempers have to be suppressed.
Exactly, very good. Okay, now somebody else was saying something, I think. Are there anything else in um, in the chat, Lisa, Angela?
No, nothing, go ahead, Rex.
Okay, all right, so let's go to step four. Now, this is when we're telling the difference, before I had my recovery training, this is the way I've responded. And after, this is the way I I responded. Um, and she wrote, I now, I now have this methods to use. I would have been meaner to her, um, she can't help that she's a gossip, so, um. What did y'all think about that in the terms of sabotage?
Jumping that, judging that she knows that, and that the girls are gossip, uh, judgment.
Anybody else?
She's accepting the fact who she is, that's her average because she likes to gossip.
Okay, but she's also being judgmental.
Very judgmental.
Yes.
Yeah, and she, she could have, she could, she could have also picked up the phone. And spoke to her calm, and then if she got a temper, she could have planned to sign and acted to say goodbye.
Yes, she could have done that, too. Uh, Dan?
Uh, I'm gonna spot that it's not only outer environment, it's dynamic outer environment. So the closer the ties, the stronger the symptoms.
And the stronger the spotting should be, right. I was in the supermarket and a lady was yelling at her kid. If people can't control their kids, why do they have them? The supermarket was crowded and hot. I was just having a bad day. When I got out to my car, I had a flat tire. All of this was giving me symptoms, they got worse when my ex pulled up. So what sabotage do you see there? And consider the way I read it also. Because this was my example, uh, Dan?
I see four, I see four examples.
Okay.
The supermarket was, the lady was young and a kid, and then people can't control their kids. The supermarket was crowded, when I got to my car, the flat tire, and the last one, it got worse when my ex pulled up.
Okay, actually.
Four examples.
Actually, there were five examples, because the supermarket was crowded and hot, and that was irritating, too. Okay, anybody else?
Definitely full of judgment.
Mm hmm, lots of judgment.
And same in the chat, yeah, pointing out that this is telling a story, not example of a single situation.
That's right. Okay, so, looking back, it was too much information. It was a vicious cycle criticizing, giving advice, working myself up continually and obsessing. Okay, step two, um. Okay, step two, um. Anger, the the, my feelings and sensations were anger, embarrassment, feelings of inadequacy, tenseness, pressure in my head, my chest. Air hunger, shakiness, hot face, sweaty palms, adrenaline rush, that's all I wrote. So what, what are the, um. The sabotages here? Dan?
Adrenaline rush, that's a medical term determined by a doctor.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so what other, did y'all see any other sabotage in there? Okay, well, um, I gave the simp, I gave the emotional feelings and I gave the physical symptoms. That's all I gave. I did not give any angry thoughts or fearful thoughts. And I did not give any impulses, and I'm sure I probably had some impulse, and I may have carried out those impulses as well. Okay, um, so I did, and, and that's basically what I said. I didn't identify the angry fearful thoughts or the disturbing impulses. Uh, now step three, I was angry at the lady and the baby in the store. I was angry at the store. I was angry at the heat, at the car, at the tire, and at my ex. At everything going on. Angry at the day. I was embarrassed and did not know what to do when my ex drove up and offered to help. The tools I used. People do things that annoy us, not to annoy us. Every act of self-control leads to a sense of self-respect and, and self-confidence. Calm begets calm, temper begets temper. I cannot change the outer environment. I can change my attitude and thoughts about it. I can't change the situation or the past. So what sabotage do y'all see here? Uh, Dan?
In the beginning here, it's, it's kinda like she's given what should have been expressed in step two as the thoughts. I know she's identifying tougher, but.
Right, right.
And here again, it's on multiple things, so it's, it's a collage.
Mm-hmm, very, that's a lot. I like that, you're right. Uh, Eric?
She didn't endorse.
That's right, that's right, no endorsement. Anybody else?
Uh, Andrea? The chat, Rexy, um, not identifying fearful temper. Person not spotting temper, just saying they were angry.
Mm-hmm, very good. Andrea?
Yeah, that, that was me. I just was gonna say the same thing, that the person didn't actually spot their temper. They just said, I'm angry.
That's right, that's right. And they didn't, they didn't identify what nuance or anything. Okay, Dan?
Uh, life in the main of, is made up of frustration, irritations, sometimes every five seconds of the day. So when we expect it, we're not disappointed.
Mm-hmm, very good. Uh, Lisa, did you have your hand up?
I was also gonna mention fearful temper, but we had a lot of people mention fearful temper.
Very good.
Would, um, would angry at the whole day be temperamental lingo?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah. I think that would be temperamental. And, uh, let's see. Everything that was going on, I think that might could be temperamental lingo as well. Okay, so let's see what I put here. Uh, well, all I put was do, do not endorse, but everything y'all mentioned also is sabotage. Is that a new hand, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I also spot not taking things as part X.
Mm-hmm, very good. Okay, now step four, this is supposed to be the before and after. Uh, before I had my recovery training, I knew nothing about the environment. I, it never occurred to me that I had a temper. Now I know that I have two types of temper. I did not know, excuse me, I did not have this program to calm myself down. I used the tools to calm myself down, and I allowed my ex to change my tire, then accepted his invite to dinner. What sabotage do y'all see there at the end? Well, okay, well, it, it, it's well reported. It could have been reported better, um, but I can't, I don't know, uh, that there was any sabotage there. Dan?
Failure to endorse.
Okay, well, actually endorsing though is in step three. But, but I did not endorse on step three, so you're right about that. Okay, all right, now, do y'all understand both concepts, the concept to look towards the spots to find the sabotage and also to explore or be, do a little detective work to determine, um, how the, how the, um, outer environment crossed over the bridge of temper into the inner environment. Do y'all have any questions about any of that? So, so now look at, at the roadmap. We can define the term sabotage. We can divide it we can divine, define it in two different definitions. Uh, also, we can list the benefits of spotting sabotage, not only in our own events, but we can uh, list the benefits of spotting sabotage in the examples at our meetings. And we can quickly and easily spot sabotage. So, in conclusion, getting out of one's comfort zone is not easy. Sabotaging only takes a second before we realize that it has happened or is, I'm sorry, it's happening or it has already happened. Dr. Lowe tells us that we must be patient with ourselves, be consistent and persistent. Many nervous people do not believe that they are capable of change. But Dr. Lowe tells us that we are a capable lot. We are capable of change. So, break loose, don't sabotage yourself. But instead, endorse, endorse, endorse. And here are the references.